Welcome to the regular town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Tuesday, January 16th, 2024. Uh, the meeting is now called to order. We have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Ockerton.
Here.
Councilmember Bunch.
Here.
Councilmember Elkma.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ray.
Here.
Mayor Morris.
Present. Uh, first thing on the agenda is our pledge of allegiance and since Sue Mueller talked to me before the meeting, I'm going to ask her to lead us in the pledge.
America. Stand. Nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public announcements, uh, anything from council? Um, I have one item that's come up in the last, uh.
Well, there is one thing. I noted that this was the only state in the Union this week that had no danger of snow report.
That's why we all live here.
Yes.
Uh, one thing that has come up, uh, it's probably in the news now, but we're hearing it is there's a $1 billion deficit at the state legislature level. So we're going to have to be very diligent watching where they plan to make that, uh, that money up. Uh, the budget and is, uh, out and the legislature is in session. Call the public, please.
No.
Okay, town manager report.
Mayor, uh, members of council, um, I just have a couple of short items, uh, Brian's going to put on the screen. Um, we have an upcoming shred-a-thon, um, scheduled for Saturday, January 27th, from nine o'clock until noon. It's a community event, uh, and it's free. Um, so the collection, um, and shred site is at six zero six one East Hidden Valley Drive, uh, a block south of Cave Creek Road. The, the next item is more important. Okay, um, this item is, um, for the council and for the residents, um, who are interested in keeping up to date and knowing what is going on with, um, the council. So we have updated our agenda page, um, to make it easier with one click, uh, for the agenda or the results of the meeting or meeting video or the minutes. So, um, all those red buttons there by each meeting, you just click on that and the agenda will pop up. So it's, it's just a step forward in trying to make it easier and, um, more accessible and quicker, um, for our residents and the community in general to keep informed about what is coming before council, um, at the meetings or catching up on what actions council has taken and, uh, the, uh, minutes of the record. And lastly, this is my last council meeting. It took me a long time to get here. Almost, I'm a month shy of 26 years. I have been at more than 620 council meetings just in Cave Creek. And if you caught my, thank you. It's been nearly a thousand meetings if you count all my public service. So it's, it's, uh, been a pleasure and interesting over 26 years, seeing how things, um, have, have grown and, and changed and, um, but all in all, it's a great community. Proud to be here.
Okay, we are going to miss you. Wish you congratulations. You, you've left your heart and soul in the town and, uh, we're not going to give it back to you. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna call you a cave creeker forever. So.
Well, Teresa is planning some big shindig on Thursday, February 1st for the entire community, I guess, to come out. At what time? Three? Three o'clock? Yeah, Thursday afternoon on.
TBD.
February 1st. Not my favorite thing, but I will be here. So come on down. The more the merrier. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you for your service, your dedication. You have just, uh, especially the last six years, you came in with the town, was in deep trouble and you righted the ship and got it pointed the right direction and, uh.
Now Grady can.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes, let's, let's hope it goes the right way.
Um, first on the agenda, uh, in the action part of the meeting is the approval of December 4th, 2023 regular council meeting minutes, and I'm going to make the motion because it has been updated. Motion to approve the consent agenda with corrections to the 1220, 12 for 2023 minutes, lines 42 to 43 to read, quote, David Phelps requested that the October 16th minutes on consent agenda be amended to indicate he was in support of the noted agenda item. So that motion is awaiting a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes seven zero. If there is no objection, I will take item number five out of order and move it to the top of the agenda. No objections noted. The council discussion approval of a town manager employment agreement between the town of Cave Creek and Grady E. Miller. And this is presented by the town attorney who is on the phone with us. Mr. Attorney, any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, I'll, uh, I apologize I'm not there. I'm the Dewey Town Attorney and we have councils meetings up here. So I'm, you have me till 6:30. It has been an honor to work with the town. It's been an honor to work with Carrie. When you hired Carrie, she asked me to send her examples of, of manager agreements and she, and she selected what is a really fair agreement drawn from the number and operating under that successfully ever, ever since. Uh, we've used that as the template to prepare for you, the, the, the agreement here tonight. I've negotiated with Grady and he, this is a very fair agreement, um, where it modifies it a little bit over Carrie's. It amplifies the performance criteria. It gives him the option to select an, an alternatives for both auto and for health that if he selects them will greatly save the town money, but doesn't have to. Um, I believe this is a fair contract. I recommend it heartily.
Okay, thank you. Um, I had some comments I'd like to, uh, bring it, put into the record. Um, perhaps the most impactful and long lasting decision council makes is a town manager. In my 10 years of town service, we have own, had only two town managers. For the audience, the town manager manages the town with considerable latitude, including deciding how things get done. And that, the operative word there is how. Formal guidance is given via the general plan, the strategic plan and yearly budget documents. The town manager determines how to get those things done. After an extensive search, a contract is before us for possible approval. Grady, Grady Miller is before us tonight with his family and we welcome Grady and his family. I'd like to read a little bit about Grady's background. Grady Miller has over 35 years experience in cities and towns in Arizona, California and Rhode Island. From July 2015 to June 2023, Grady was the town manager of Fountain Hills. Just prior to being appointed in Cave Creek, Miller had served as interim city manager of Kingman, Arizona, where he helped the city council address a number of important issues. Miller grew up in Huntington Beach, California and started his career in public service, working for the city of Santa Ana in Orange County after graduating from San Diego State University. He went on to work for the city of Burbank in the Los Angeles area before relocating in 1990 to Peoria, Arizona. While at the city of Peoria for 19 years, he held positions of assistant to the city manager, communications director, deputy community services director, before becoming town manager of Nara Gansett, Rhode Island in 2010. In addition to his career in local government, Miller has been a leader in the region and in community. He previously served as, on the management committee of the Maricopa Association of Governments, a metropolitan planning organization for cities and towns. He has been the chair and vice chair of the board of directors for the Arizona Metropolitan Trust, a nonprofit organization providing group medical benefits to municipal employees in Arizona and is currently a member of the Four Peaks Rotary Club and a board member of the Four Peaks Rotary Foundation. Miller holds a master of public administration degree from ASU and a bachelor of arts degree in public administration from San Diego State University. In 2020, Miller received his credentialed manager designation from the International City County Management Association, one of the highest professional achievements a city manager or town manager can attain. The credentialed manager designation is awarded to less than 5% of city managers nationally and only nine city and town managers in Arizona have the distinction. In 2023, the International City County Management Association also recognized Miller for his distinguished local government career by granting him an ICMA life membership. Um, with that, we'll move to questions by council. Are there any questions from council? All right. There's public comment on this issue?
I have no one wishing to speak.
Okay, um, then I'm going to recognize the vice mayor for a motion.
First of all, I'd just like to say congratulations to Grady. We are so happy to have found each other because it is a mutually successful relationship that we're looking towards. Uh, Carrie, you, you will have very big shoes to fill, a very high bar, but we look forward to working with you to make sure that you are successful. So welcome to Cave Creek. Motion to approve the town manager employment agreement between the town of Cave Creek and Grady E. Miller.
Comments from council. You have the motion, Catherine?
I made my comments just to reiterate, we're very happy to have.
Tom, you have the second?
You don't have to ride the bulls at the buffalo chip to get this position. You're welcome.
Although it would be nice.
Yeah. And, and I'll tell you the strategy to use. Get your butt off that buffalo as soon as you can.
Other comments from council, to my left?
Mr. Mayor, I can't, I can't believe that the vice mayor just said that Carrie had big feet.
Isn't that what I said?
He said, you said Grady had big shoes to fill.
Yes.
I got it.
Just welcome. Absolutely.
Tom?
Ditto.
Dusty?
Welcome.
Okay, with that, um, public, we had public comment. I guess we're at the moment of truth. So, uh, this is a financial. So we'll have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bunch.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Elkma.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
You betcha.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Aye.
Councilmember Ockerton. Vice Mayor Ray.
Yes.
Mayor Morris.
Aye. Seven zero, Grady, welcome to Cave Creek. Gray, we'd love to hear from you and have you introduce your family too.
Mayor and council, I'm very delighted by both the, um, the wonderful comments I, I heard and, um, also I am very much looking forward to working with each of you and, and you as a group, as well as the, um, senior management team of, of the, the town. Um, I do have with me here tonight, my wife, Tammy. Next to her is my daughter Amanda and my granddaughter Haley. And Amanda and Haley are just part of the, uh, group. The other group includes my son-in-law and he's staying home tonight with our two-year-old, um, that could not be put under control tonight in this room. So it's a good thing that that's not happening. Um, but, um, earlier I, I heard, you know, and I'm not going to talk about your shoe size anymore, Carrie, but, um, I, I am, um, not only honored to have been appointed tonight, but I'm also looking very much forward to working with you, but also building on the success of Carrie. Carrie, um, from my research on the community, Carrie has done a lot of, of heavy lifting to get the organization where it is. Um, there was a lot of, there was a time when Cave Creek wasn't very stable and I think Carrie really had a stabilizing effect as well as the council, um, and bringing us where we are today. And I'm going to do everything I can, um, to build on the success of, of Carrie. And the good news is Carrie's going to be around, um, to help with my transition. And so, um, that's just going to just make this as smooth as possible. So, and I'm looking forward again to being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Next on the agenda is council discussion approval to enter into the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact Agreement between the town of Cave Creek and the state of Arizona through the emergency management division of the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, DEMA slash EM, and to authorize the mayor to execute said agreement presented by the town marshal, Adam Stun.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just before, um, the town marshal, um, goes into his presentation, I did want to clarify a couple of things right, right off the top. You're aware that we have an agreement, um, with the regional automatic aid system and, um, you're aware that we have an agreement with DFFM, the Department of Forestry and Fire Management. So this is separate and distinct from those agreements, um, that we are entering into, um, this evening.
Thank you. Mayor and council, mayor, vice mayor, member of the council, um, requesting tonight that we enter into agreement with the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact between the town of Cave Creek and the state of Arizona. It's a 10-year contract. Um, the original contract expired on the 31st of December. And just to summarize, in the event of a, uh, emergency, the mutual aid compact would allow mutual aid to come from anywhere in the state of Arizona by other providing members, um, in the event of an emergency and we request it. Um, it also says that in the event of an emergency in another jurisdiction requests some of our assets that we have the ability to send those assets as well. It's an important emergency management tool. I think the town certainly benefits from it as we unfortunately had some very large fires, uh, in our recent past and God willing, we won't have any more of those. But in the event that we need resources, um, obviously this Arizona Mutual Aid Compact is a very important tool for emergency management and I would urge you to approve it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, so Carrie mentioned, what, was it three different organizations that we have agreements with? Describe for me briefly the, the communication between those three and how that gets, how there's a choice about when, who goes where.
Sure. Uh, in the event of a large scale emergency, um, the town has an IGA with Arizona Department of Emergencies Management as well as Maricopa County Emergency Management. The fire department has mutual aid agreements, uh, automatic aid, and then we also have a separate agreement with the Arizona Department of Forest, uh, wildland fires, that type of thing, air support mainly. Um, what this Arizona Mutual Aid Compact says, it's not only for, for, uh, for police and fire, it's also, let's say, heaven forbid, we had a, uh, landslide wiped out a road and we needed heavy equipment that the town of Cave Creek doesn't possess. As long as we contacted the Arizona State Mutual Aid or Emergency Management, we would then be able to request that piece of equipment from another jurisdiction, Phoenix, Scottsdale, wherever. And as long as they're members of the compact, which the majority of the jurisdictions and tribes are in the state of Arizona, we would then have the ability to have that piece of equipment help us. We do have the ability to ask for, um, reimbursement for the use of their equipment and the manpower, but, um, commonly it's not very common to request. Thanks. Welcome, sir. Hope to answer your question.
Other questions? Being none, there's public comment?
No one wishing to speak?
Okay, then we are looking for a motion on this one. Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact Agreement between the town of Cave Creek and the state of Arizona through the Emergency Management Division of the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs.
Second.
Not done. DEMA slash EM.
Sorry.
And to authorize the mayor to execute said agreement. Now, Bernie.
Okay, second. My, my packet's in the truck.
Okay, you had the motion, vice mayor.
Uh, this is something that we need to do and happy to do it.
Ernie, you had the second?
Yeah, it's continuing, just continuing on with the, with a, uh, the safety and precautions that we've made in the past and, uh, it's a smart thing to do.
Other comments from council? I have a comment in this one. Uh, in, in the time period since we've been here with the forestry agreement, with the other agreements, with automatic aid, with all this, this town is an order of magnitude safer and has more help coming in the case of something has gone wrong than we've had ever in the history of the town. So I certainly support this. Uh, there are no financial ramifications to this, so we can take a voice vote. I'm getting a nod. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Moving to next agenda item, council discussion and approval to adopt a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the mayor to approve amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement between the town of Cave Creek and the city of Phoenix for water service infrastructure presented by utility director Sean Cruzweiser.
Dean, Mayor and council, um, we've got a couple of slides just to help explain what we're dealing with tonight, but I did want to point out this is actually an agreement that originally was put in place. Um, uh, uh, Carrie direct is actually able to get this resolved for the town. So there's two intergovernmental agreements in place with, uh, Phoenix. Um, in 2018, uh, the first agreement was put in place, which addressed the fact that the town was providing water service south of Carefree Highway. Uh, the issue there is because that's actually a city of Phoenix water service area. Um, that was done largely to, um, allow for, um, the development of commercial properties down there because city of Phoenix did not actually have the ability to provide fire flow for commercial developments. It's their pressure zone 10. Um, this exhibit shows that area in question. Um, so, um, Carrie was actually able to work with Phoenix. Um, they were quite upset with the town for a number of years, um, and get that resolved and put the IGA in place. That IGA allowed them to do is it gave Phoenix five years to complete the improvements necessary for them to take over service south of Carefree Highway. So again, this is city's Phoenix's service area. It's not the town's water service area. It's in our municipal boundary. Um, but they had purchased a, an existing water company and this was in the certificated area for that company. Um, the improvements needed, uh, were actually booster station upgrade for their pressure zone 10. They only have one booster station in pressure zone 10 and happens to be located just south of their, um, fire station on Carefree Highway or Cave Creek Road, sorry. Um, and then they actually had to do some new pipeline work, some pipeline work in their pressure zone nine to allow water to better flow up in the pressure zone 10 and then actually a waterline improvement in pressure zone 10, which is coming out of that booster station, um, into Cave Creek Road and going north and tying into the existing town, uh, 16-inch water line that was, uh, uh, placed for, uh, in front of Walmart. So with them and doing those improvements, that would allow them to take over the service area, which again, the, the goal of the, uh, of Phoenix was actually to take over this service. Um, so the, uh, they had five years from the original agreement and then, uh, in 2019, we entered into a second IGA and that's, uh, I didn't want people to get confused, but the second IGA was about, uh, city of Phoenix providing water services for Cave Creek. So the first one was about addressing the infrastructure issue. The second one was, uh, the more beneficial to the town because it actually allowed Phoenix to divert, treat and deliver CAP water supplies to the town through their, the city of Phoenix's distribution system, which is why we're building the city of Phoenix interconnect site. Um, it allowed for temporary wires connection to the city of Phoenix, which is something that, uh, through our master plan work, we actually have reached out to Phoenix staff and we're trying to get that resolved. It allows for up to a 60-day emergency water supply. We actually want to detail out how that might work and where that could be. And it also allowed the town to store some of our water resources with Phoenix. Phoenix does have, um, uh, what they call, uh, injection wells that allow them to recharge water back into the aquifer south of Carefree Highway. We have access to three of those. We put the permits in place that allows us to do that. So the second IGA was very good, but really that just provided real benefits to the, to, uh, to the town for our water supplies. First one was, um, and that's the one in question tonight was actually dealing with the service boundary issue. Um, so Phoenix has requested, um, to do a two-year amendment and is actually written in the original agreement. Um, uh, the original agreement allowed Phoenix up for five years to complete the necessary improvements with up to two, um, one-year, uh, extensions if agreed to by both parties. So Phoenix, uh, contacted us at the end of the summer, asking us to do the extension. So we've been working with the Phoenix staff for a couple of years now because we've been involved with looking at the designs, um, not so much on the booster station upgrade, uh, but more for the pipeline work. Cause we wanted to coordinate the pipeline work as it was coming up care, um, Cave Creek Road to tie into our infrastructure. So this map shows sort of the, the, the larger improvements, but again, there's some other improvements that Phoenix has committed to south of, uh, of these improvements to, um, add to their, their different pressure zones that they have. So, um, Phoenix has asked us to, to execute the two-year extension. It actually matches the town's current schedule for building the city of Phoenix interconnect site. So it's not a bad thing for the town to allow for this agreement because it's, it matches us when we're actually, once these improvements are made, then they can deliver the water to our interconnect site. Um, Phoenix, as I said, has, has actually completed the design for both the pipeline and the booster station upgrade projects. We've seen those. They've actually purchased material and the next slide will show some of the pipe work that they purchased. So the booster station site, um, the 10A site is located south of their, uh, police station. Um, it's a little hard to get to, but, uh, I was able to sneak in there and see that they actually do have a lot of the, or most of the pipe material for the 16-inch line already purchased. They've actually started purchasing or already pre-purchased like we've done with the Phoenix interconnect sites and the electrical gear that's necessary pumps and motors for the booster station upgrade project. Um, and I've talked to the Phoenix staff. Um, this is funded in their capital program. Both projects are funded in their capital program. The way Phoenix's CIP can be a little confusing because what they've explained to me is that they initially fund a project, you'll see it in their CIP and as it, it's the next year, it gets, or gets wrapped into other projects. You'll, you'll lose the individual project numbers. That's partly because of the size of their CIP. But they've said that there is the funding both in their CIPs. Um, they've got the individual projects identified. They're, they're, um, they've reached out, um, I've talked to their, their contractors and, uh, they said they're both expected by March, April to actually get their final contracts awarded by Phoenix to allow them to start. So March, April, um, we expect to see some activity in Cave Creek Road with the pipeline work, which should last through the end of the year is what we've been told. Uh, the booster station work will lag behind because of the pipe, uh, pumps and motors and equipment that need to be put, placed on that one. So that's why they've asked for the two-year extension. Um, so what staff is asking is, uh, the council, uh, authorize a two-year extension that was originally contemplated in the, um, the agreement. Uh, the, um, in addition to the two-year time extension, we're having the amendment address the fact that the town has made the infrastructure obligation, um, as part of the agreement, the town agreed to, to make a payment to Phoenix, uh, for their cost of improving, uh, making improvements to take over the service area south of Carefree Highway. Originally that was a $600,000 payment that was due to the town. Uh, we've come forth to the town because there were several development agreements that, um, were considered in lieu of those payments. We've actually processed those development agreements. So our final payment was just over, I think, a hundred and $12,000 to Phoenix. But the IGA, this amendment will effectively, um, effectively point out that we have made that obligation. And the other, um, amendment or other thing in the amendment is the updating to exhibit C. Exhibit, uh, A and B dealt with more of the service area and the, um, the infrastructure that Phoenix was going to build. Exhibit C actually listed the pipelines that, um, were going to be dedicated by the town, public pipelines that will be dedicated from the town of Cave Creek to city of Phoenix. So improvements have been made. Um, the sprouts, uh, develop, development, um, Brazza Hospital, uh, Dutch Brothers has gone in. So there's some, you know, new pipelines. We want to make sure that was addressed. So those are the three, uh, four, yeah, three factors that are built into this IGA. So we see it as a good thing for the town. It matches our city of Phoenix interconnect. Uh, we believe Phoenix has been a good partner for the town. As you can see physically, they've, they've purchased pipeline. It's sitting down there. They're, 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 I think they're committed to completing this and it is their service area. So, uh, again, it's not like they're trying to skirt that issue. It's just, you know, like everybody else, generally what I've heard is a lot of their projects, because they have much larger CP than we do, I've been struggling with the cost increases that I've been seeing on a much smaller scale in the town. So they had to just, uh, to deal with it. So they're, they're trying to balance stuff out. And again, asking for the two years does not harm the town. So my recommendation would be to allow this amendment to be processed.
Questions from council?
Mayor, I have one.
Go ahead, Ernie.
Uh, Sean, uh, as I understand, the water that we've been sending down there now will go back into our, uh, into our, into our catalog. Is that?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmember. Um, so we've been providing, uh, domestic water service for the Walmart, the, um, um, uh, the small mall, mall in front of Walmarts and to Burger King. The other properties down there actually get, uh, domestic water service from Phoenix. So we actually, uh, as part of taking over that water service, we're not giving up of any of our water resources. So I think in total Walmart uses about 18 acre feet a year. So that'll come back to our town's water portfolio once this is done.
Good. Thank you. I'm just making sure that was still there.
Not only that, but, uh, the, uh, the wastewater goes into our plant. We're actually generating water, uh, and saving our own. So there's a big water credit for this. Uh, any questions from council? Uh, seeing none, there's public comment on this?
I have no one wishing to speak.
No comment. So we're looking for a motion on this one?
I have my motion. Move to adopt resolution number R 2024 dash oh one, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the mayor to approve amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement between the town of Cave Creek and the city of Phoenix for water service infrastructure.
Second.
Uh, this is not financial. There's no, is there any dollars involved with this? There's no, is there any dollars involved with this?
No, because actually the infrastructure obligations came to you before and you've already authorized.
Okay, well, so let's do a voice, voice hold on this. All those in favor signify as saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next item on the agenda is council discussion approval of a cooperative purchasing agreement contract with Weber Water Resources to rehabilitate the Galvin well in Desert Hills in an amount up to forty thousand dollars and to authorize the mayor and staff to execute the necessary contract documents presented again by Sean Cruzweiser.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, just a little bit of background, um, Galvin is one of the three wells that the town has in the desert hills service area that, uh, provides some water. Uh, since I've been with the town, the, the capacity of these wells has, has dropped and we struggled and Galvin actually, uh, the government law has given us some, uh, issues before. But, um, over this past calendar year in two thousand twenty-three, staff noticed that, um, we'd actually last rehabilitated this wall in about two thousand twenty-one. Uh, we went in, into pump drawdown test. We changed the pump capacity. Uh, the existing pump was over two hundred gallons a minute. That got lower to about eighty gallons a minute. Cause that's what this, the aquifer could sustain because the aquifer, uh, water table has dropped and, and it is more stressed out there. Um, so that was running well up to, to, to the beginning of two thousand twenty-three, when we were seeing about twenty in April, about, uh, seventy-nine gallons per minute. The water table was about six hundred fifteen feet. And then by November through the summer, the staff noticed that we were decreasing capacity. So we dropped down to about forty-one gallons a minute production. But you can see the water table actually came up a little bit because we weren't drawing it down. So that could indicate a couple of things is that, um, the, the well casing itself could be impacted. The gravel pack around that casing could be damaged or it could be a pump issue. Uh, we don't know until we actually pull it. Um, there could be a hole in the, the, what called the downpipe, this line of water just basically recirculate. There could be a problem with motor. So we've worked with Weber Water Resources. They have an existing contract that we're trying to do a cooperative purchase agreement with. Um, and there would be a sort of a two-scape, uh, two-phase scope of work to have them, uh, pull the, the well and motor out. Do a, a video of the well and we can determine when they pull it out and whether or not there's an issue with the, um, again, the drop pipe, uh, or the motor itself. Um, and then we'll get a video done of it and then we ask for enough capacity. So we don't have to come back to council is that they can actually do a cleaning of it. So they could do a mechanical brush and bail and also a chemical cleaning of the gravel pack. It's probably prudent for us because what we've seen out there. Um, as the water table has been dropping, we're seeing a lot of calcification, um, in the, in the gravel pack out there, which does reduce production. So, uh, we've asked, uh, for the authority to do this two-step approach to, uh, try and bring back and rehabilitate that well. Um, this is one of two wells. Um, the other well, the one being north of Carefree Highway that feed into one reservoir site at Tenth Street. So we do stress, um, when, uh, the Galvin well is again typically around eighty gallons a minute. The other well is actually only less than thirty gallons a minute typically. So this, this, uh, distresses the system because we don't have a reservoir or well water to fill that reservoir. We actually assist, uh, feed it with system water, which does add some stress. And actually we have to manually do that by the staff. So we're hopeful that we can, uh, get the capacity back up. Because the water table actually came back a little bit or didn't drop during this time period, we do think it's something to do with the, the well motor, the well casing. Um, and it's something that we can address. So, um, Weber is, uh, has the contract to do this, uh, for other municipalities. And we think they're a good partner for the town to work with to get this work done. And, uh, we want to get it done in the next few months before the summertime. Um, so we have that water available to us. With that, I can answer any questions.
Questions? Seeing none, there is public comment on this?
No one wishing to speak.
In that case, uh, we are looking for a motion. I will make the motion. Motion to approve a cooperative purchase agreement contract with Hennessy Mechanical Sales for the repair of a, oops, excuse me. Yeah, let's, let's go up to number three instead. Motion to approve a cooperative purchasing agreement contract with Weber Water Resources to rehabilitate the Galvin well in Desert Hills in an amount up to forty thousand dollars and to authorize the mayor and staff to execute the necessary contract documents.
Second.
This is, uh, okay. So I have, uh, my only comment on this is, uh, it's, uh, it's necessary. So.
Where do we stand on taking a look at the Cave Creek wells?
I'm actually, I'm working with Weber to actually come up with a scope of work. So, um, we were trying to move some money around in the capital program. They gave me some estimates from September. I'm getting those updated. So, uh, my goal will be in the next couple of meetings to come back to council for cooperative purchase agreement. So you can, um, see that. Uh, we investigated six of the wells over a year ago, um, dropping videos down. So our goal will be to actually do the next step, which is to clean them. A new pump drawdown test to get to test both the volume etroponity and the quality of the water. So, um, the next few meetings, you expect to see that on the agenda.
Have we done the high, or finished the high rock, high geography sur- survey?
Uh, well, we've done the paper search. So really we, we, we do want to do the drawdown test and that's really, but the next step will be is when we actually put a temporary motor and pump down into the test and we can test it and see the impacts of the aquifer in the area. And we can, now will really tell us what's going on in the, in the aquifer below and each of these wells and whether they are viable to bring back online. Again, prior to the, the water company having the, um, water treatment plant, it was a well-based system. When they brought the water treatment plant online, they actually then used the wells as a backup. Um, and they're all actually use a pipeline to bring them all to the water treatment plant site. So we could either, as part of the master plan, they're recommending that we try to reinvigorate that and or use that to help meet our, in our water, um, obligations to ranch and manana for irrigation needs. So we don't have to pump CAP water up the, up the pipeline to meet that obligation. But, um, yeah, so the goal would be to have those wells. I think there's five, actually staff I just talked to, they recommended a sixth well that we actually take a look at also. Um, to, to, while we're doing this work. So I'm getting all those scopes together. We'll be coming back to council here shortly.
Okay, thank you.
But part of that discussion is to evaluate the risk, uh, if that would jeopardize our ability to bank water with the Department of Water Resources. So we have to decide what's more beneficial for Cave Creek.
Right. My understanding is, uh, because we have been, um, we haven't been operating the wells, it's been a, a very clean, um, ability for the town to, uh, recharge the excess, uh, CIP water that we're not using to, to deliver to customers. That's going into recharge facilities and generating, uh, long-term storage, storage credits for the town. My understanding and we'll get clarification. I was going to talk to Michelle Van Quathan about this is that, um, if we do bring the wells back online in Cave Creek, um, that we'll then have to offset. So if we use say a hundred acre feet of groundwater that year, we, uh, if we recharge the first hundred acre feet, we'll, we'll go to settle up the groundwater.
Oh.
And that's my understanding. So we can continue to, we'll just, yeah, we'll just bounce, we'll be recharging less. And in fact, but might be beneficial. We'll have to do the cost benefit analysis, but again, the master plan is really pointing out that it's, it's prudent for us to take a look at, um, getting that, uh, the wells back online as a backup. You know, there's a lot of uncertainty with this, uh, Colorado River allocations and everything else. So the town has to look at all our options. So this is one of our, one of the tools that we have to have available to us.
Other comments, other questions? Okay, um, there's public comment on this?
None.
Seeing none, uh, we will need a motion.
I can do that. I found my, I found my book.
No, I did?
Yeah.
I knew I'd mess up tonight sometime. Okay, so, um, hearing no further comments, so we're ready for a vote and this will be a.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkhart?
Yes.
Base Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. The motion passes, uh, seven zero. Next on the agenda is, uh, council discussion approval of a cooperative purchase agreement contract with Hennessy Mechanical Sales for the repair of a pump at the Niri Booster Station in an amount up to seventy-one thousand dollars and to authorize the mayor and staff to execute the necessary contract documents.
And for the cur, Kerry? Uh, Mayor Council, so, um, again, we're trying to use a cooperative purchase agreement. Um, and the reason we're doing this is because it actually benefits the town because by having going through another municipality who's gone through and has a, a contract, a standing contract, effective term contracted. It helps, helps us be more efficient because we are a smaller, uh, utility agency in the valley. So that's why we use the con, uh, cooperative purchasing, um, process a lot. Um, in this case, we actually did solicit some other, uh, quotations for the repair work and actually Hennessy Mechanical was the lowest. And, uh, we felt that it was still good to use their cooperative purchasing contract. So the Niri site actually is the, um, all the water from the town's water treatment plant must pass through the Niri site. It gets transmitted to the reservoir site and then there's the booster station that actually then delivers it into the, um, the system there. So there's three large booster pumps. What I, because of the shape of the sly, what I cropped up is actually, you'll see off the side on, would be the left-hand side of these three pumps is actually there's two empty pump cans to allow for, um, when the site was built, it was actually going to be expanded to. Um, the, the, the problem we have right now is those are the large pumps. Those are actually fire flow pumps. Those are fifteen hundred gallon a minute pumps each. So, um, they're set to actually back up for fire protection in the system. So in the capital program, a few years out, we actually have some smaller pumps I'd like to place at this, uh, site to make it more efficient. But in reality, these, these pumps have been in place since two thousand and eight and been the heart of the town's water system since two thousand and eight. So in two thousand twenty-one, we took out what is pump number one on the right-hand side. You can see the paint on the, the pump itself is a little bit different. Um, and actually had it serviced. We, uh, when I first got here, we had the question of what's the, what's the condition of these pumps? Cause typically you'd pull these pumps every five years and take a look at them. Um, since they've been in operation since two thousand and eight, we were very concerned about it. So when we pulled the first one out in two thousand, uh, twenty twenty-one, um, we found a lot of damage with the bowl assemblies and the impellers. Um, uh, we suspect a couple of things is the way this site is set up. Um, all the water has to go through Niri. Niri feeds into the system, even when we talk about getting water from Rockaway and back into the system. It first has to go through Niri to get up to Carol Heights Booster to get into Rockaway. And the way this site, the system is set up is that these pumps actually boost it to our pressure zone seven. So I don't have a graphics to show that, but pressure zone seven is actually the main pressure zone in the town's system. It goes all the way north up Spur Cross Road and it's that the water provides all the water up Spur Cross Road, up Schoolhouse Road. So that's our main pressure zone in the system. And then it gets cut by a pressure reducing valves to actually go down into our, uh, pressure zone south of the town core, which is pressure zone four. Um, one, and then also over to the desert hills. Um, so these pumps work fairly hard because they're trying to move water up. And even, um, uh, when we're actually sending water up to the Rockaway reservoir, it's these pumps that actually send the water up to Rockaway. We turn off Carol Heights and allow the water to get boosted up all the way up to the Rockaway reservoir. So they, uh, are moving a lot of water, but same token is that, um, they're meant for fire flows. So they're actually meant to move a lot of water, but they're not as efficient as they should be. That's why they, when they did the design, they left two pump cans. We're waiting on, and in the capital program, I have the improvements to those, add those pumps, but we want to wait to the cap, uh, the master plan to be done to tell us what size pumps they should be. And it's going to work in interconjunction with the new interconnect with Phoenix. But, uh, again, after we pulled pump number one, we were able to work with the vendor, uh, and do some of the most critical repairs to bring that one back onto service. But there was a lot of discussion, um, at that time about replacing the pump assembly itself. So as we've moved forward, uh, we skipped a year because, uh, we just honestly, we were very busy. We were trying to do one a year to get through the three pumps and bring them back into full service and, and do a full rehabilitation of them all. Um, so now we're going into pump two. We want to pull it out. So we've reached out to Hennessy Mechanical. It's hard for them to give you a cost on what it's going to be until they do the evaluation. So it's a two-step process. So what we're asking is actually the authority, the worst case scenario is the quote includes them pulling the pump and motor. They'll, um, they'll use a crane to do that. They'll give us a motor. We'll bring that motor to a separate motor shop and get that, um, uh, repaired, baked out, effectively re-insulated and brought back to site. And then the pump assembly itself, uh, they've given us the, the absolute cost to replace it with a in-kind, it's a pairless pump. Um, uh, and, and, uh, install that back into it. So if the existing one is salvageable, this will be less money. Uh, but we want to make sure we have the authority to make the decision once it comes out because, uh, in two thousand twenty-one, we had some discussions about what we could do with pump number one. Should we do more? It's been running better. Uh, but there's also discussion that, you know, we're not sure two and three, they might be in worse shape. We don't know until we pull them out. So we're asking for a council authority to do the worst case scenario and I'm hopeful that we can rehabilitate them, but I'm not sure if we can. So, um, with that, I can answer any more questions council may have. So again, it's worth asking for the, the worst case scenario and we're hopeful that we don't need to do that. But we thought it's prudent to do that rather than having to come back to council a second time and also delay. Uh, once we pull this pump out, the system is not being compromised because actually the Carol Heights Booster Station can also provide some fire flow for the air, for the system itself. But we'd like to get this motor out and, and back before our, our peak flows start to hit, which is usually around the end of March. So we start to see the flows pick up in the system.
Questions? Uh, I, why are we waiting to get the, I mean, it's, this is for one pump, correct? Just pump one. There's some risk in waiting, isn't there? Wouldn't you want to find out? Wouldn't you want to schedule the other two pumps sequentially to see what you've got there?
We originally wanted to do second pump, uh, uh, in two thousand twenty-two, but we got short-staffed and everything. So we, we, we missed that year and that's on us for staffing. But yeah, as far as trying to do them sequentially, same time, uh, when pump one was out, it actually was out of service for three months, getting the work done. So, um, it actually came out at same time COVID was there. So supply and demand, we were, uh, working with the vendor and got very creative and getting some, uh, rebuilt pole, bowl assemblies and some other stuff. So we don't anticipate that to be the case with pump number two, but when we pull that out, if we see significant damage, we may want to think about pulling, no, and I'm sorry, it's my mistake. Pump number three, which is level two, we might want to pull that out, but it's partly, once they pull it out, we can figure out how long it's going to take to do the repair and how extensive it is. And then our thought would be we'd pull pump three out next fall. After demand starts to, uh, to, to drop off again, which is the end of October, beginning of November. We're a little behind schedule right now.
Uh, I apologize. My former profession has two more questions for you. Wouldn't you want to do at least a pump test and a vibration analysis to see that if, uh?
You know, there's a staff, uh, do some of that. So, um, we actually have done some work in our Carol Heights Booster Station. We actually had this vibration, vibration analysis that showed that we need to replace, uh, one of the zone seven pumps up there. Um, so what we're noticing, well, again, the, the, the pump seemed to run okay. Um, again, the vibration analysis is okay. The amp draws are okay. It's just when we pulled pump number one, we were seeing damage on the impellers and the bowls. And that was, you know, we believe that's partly caused some, some of the cavitation, the way this site is being run. And these are large fire pumps and we believe they're being run a little too slow. That's why the benefit to the town would be to get some smaller pumps at this site and then balance that flow out. Um, but you know, these are the three pumps that we have right now, which are the heart of the town's water system until the C, city of Phoenix interconnect gets built.
Okay, very good. Uh, there's public comment on this?
No one wishing to speak.
Then we're looking for a motion for, with Hennessy.
I can do that.
Go ahead, Ernie.
Okay, motion to approve a cooperative purchase agreement contract with Hennessy Mechanical Sales for the repair of a pump at the Niri Booster Station in an amount up to seventy-one thousand dollars and to authorize the mayor and staff to execute the necessary contract documents.
Second.
Yeah, we, we just need to keep the stuff running and, and, uh, the best way to do that is by, by taking care of it.
We've seen a number of water-related upgrades tonight. I'd like to give credit to the mayor, Bob Morris, the water advisory committee, Sean, to Kerry, because this is a huge issue for Cave Creek. It brings us a kind of security we have never had before. Ernie and I have been on the council for sixteen, seventeen years. What is it, Ernie?
Eighteen and a half for me.
Yeah, you got two years on me. You're, you didn't lose a draw of the cards.
No.
That's what I was going to say. We knew, you know, through all these years that we had a vulnerability with only one pipe coming up from the CAP canal. And making that vulnerability go away has been a huge deal for Cave Creek. So I want to thank all the people who worked on that.
Other comments? I, I just have one, one comment, and that is for people who wondered what, wonder what the government in Cave Creek does. We're mostly a manufacturing company. We take dirty water, turn to clean water and sell it to people. That is the biggest business in this town. And, uh, that's why we spend so much time on this, on finding water, making sure it's there, recharging water, wells, pumps. Uh, but this town does not exist without our water company, just absolutely does not exist. So that's my comment. At this point, this is financial. So we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkhart?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Aye.
Base Mayor Roy?
Aye.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Now that's the last item on the agenda, except for a motion to adjourn.
Before you do that, can I make a request? When you do the agenda for January, uh, can we get an update on streetscaping?
Streetscaping?
The medians, I'm sorry. I probably used the wrong term. Can we get an update on the median restoration efforts?
Okay.
Sean's not, I mean, uh, Luke's not here, but I thought I'd plug it with you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see i- if, if we can get it done by then we will. Okay.
Just, I'm just curious where, thanks for having us. Thank you.
The motion.
Uh, yeah, I, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bye y'all.